Water below 10%. The next slide, we'll talk about specifically where you're at. As part of evaluating that, we have worked with the village going back, what did the table today say? P two thousand and thirteen, I think, is when we started doing water audits for the village to identify what your total non-revenue water is, as well as separate it down into different buckets so that we can go after the non-revenue water and reduce it. The non-revenue water is broken up into these three different buckets overall. The unbilled authorized consumption, so for instance, if the village hall uses water, metered, measured, but if you don't send yourself a bill, under the regulations for Lake Michigan, they assume that's non-revenue water. I think you're looking at making some changes to that so that it can be counted as revenue water without really a cost transfer. Other component would be your apparent losses. This is kind of your paper losses, so if meters are registering improperly and didn't actually capture the water that passed through it, but in, you know, ultimately you didn't get that revenue, that would be an apparent loss. There could be an apparent loss just within the system, how something's coded off within the system. The real losses are those physical losses, the water main breaks that occur in every community, you have to replace them, but over time that water is lost. If there's storage tanks that overfill as well, or if there was even theft of somebody taking water out of the system through a fire hydrant, that would be considered real losses. Through the water audit process and using the software by AWWA, you can divide it up into those different areas, and then there's methods to go after them to reduce them. Right now, or let's just say the last five years, your non-revenue water has averaged about twenty-seven and a half percent, and I know you've been working really hard at trying to get that down. If you, again, go to Lake Michigan water, by regulation, you have to get that down to 10% or at least develop a plan to get it down by the time you take Lake Michigan water. This might be one of those reasons why you would want to get Lake Michigan water a little bit later rather than sooner, to give you a little more time to get below that 10%. We've made recommendations for how to do that. If you submit for an allocation, you would have to submit a formal plan to tell them the type of things that we're recommending you include in that is continuing, of course, to do your annual water loss audits, continue with your leak detection, possibly even at a higher rate, continue with water main replacement, but at presumably a much higher rate than you are now, and then water meter replacement to take care of some of the apparent losses that might be built into that. For the nine-year period, ten-year period, if we're programming out to 2030, we're projecting that you would need to spend another thirty-four million dollars in water main replacement, meters, some of these other things. So that thirty-four million has to be stacked on top of all the other improvements for those Lake Michigan alternatives. And then what we ended up doing was factoring it in to the Fox River alternatives as well. Do you want to take a break on this slide?
You bet.
Are we going to question these when we come back or no? Sorry.
No, you should do that now.
When we talk about that nearly 30% number, it seems high. What percentage of that, or is it known what percentage of that is actually water used at the water treatment plant and municipal buildings?
This does not include that. Well, so it doesn't include the treatment plants. We take basically what comes out of the treatment plants, the production meter at the exit of the treatment plant, and then we're comparing that to the meters, you know, throughout the community for billable. So the process water that's used at the lime softening plant, the process water is used to die in exchange, that's just a cost of doing business within those treatment plants. You want to minimize that, but it's not included here. The specifics of here at Village Hall, I'm sure it's fairly low, you know, as far as percentage, I don't even know if it would register on the tenth of a percent here. We're looking at, I mean, there's estimates based on the real losses, based on the number of water main breaks that you have, but that's not a fine-tuned number because typically you don't see the break coming to the surface for a couple of days, maybe even a week. In some instances, if it's flowing into a storm sewer, it could be longer. So, you know, we've estimated some of those levels for the real losses and some of them for the apparent losses overall. And then I know Justin's diving into a lot of the apparent losses to see where he can find some of those specifically, and then over time, as you change out your water main, you'll get a better idea of what the real losses are and seeing that coming down.
Nearly 30% seems very high. Is there an average for a municipality comparable to ours of what their water loss range would be?
There's a chart I probably should have included in here. There's a chart that IDNR did for Lake Michigan systems, and let's just say, if I'm remembering correctly, about fifty to sixty percent of the communities were below 12%, but that means, you know, forty to fifty percent were above 12%. In this percentile, you know, it's, I wouldn't say it's common across the area, it certainly is higher than the average, but there are other communities, there's one in the Joliet Commission area that I know for sure that's even higher than yours, so I don't know if it gives you any solace, but you're not alone.
I guess the question would be, even if we weren't seeking out a new water source, would that type of loss be cause to really investigate what's going on with our supply chain?
So you are investigating it, you are trying to get it down, but as far as that making a difference, to be able to make your wells sustainable, if that was your question, it's just still not sufficient amount of water for that because of all the other communities in the area pulling from it.
And what is our cost right now to produce water?
Right, it's more like ninety cents a thousand, so it becomes a question of economy as to whether or not it's worthwhile expending money to reduce losses when you produce your own water at a lower rate. When you buy rate water at a higher rate, like retail or wholesale rates, then it becomes more economical to go after that water loss. We have been doing the water audits for the last several years using the M36 AWWA format, which does break into buckets, the apparent losses, real losses, so you can kind of see where those are at, so I can, at a later meeting, we can bring back some of that analysis so you can see it. The methodology that's used is, you know, only as good as the information that's available, so we're always trying to improve the information that we get. So one of the things that the village is working on is the residential meter replacement program. So that's going to have an impact on being able to be more, have a higher confidence level that we're measuring the water that we sell more appropriately. So things like that tend to tighten up your confidence level and may or may not affect the water loss, but what you're trying to do is to try to figure out where which buckets are in and how do you reduce it. So if you find, you know, like we've, in other places, you know, we've found instrumentation errors that have accounted for, you know, they thought they were producing more water than they actually were, so they had, you know, an apparent loss, but in reality, it wasn't a loss once they made the correction to the instrumentation. So there's a lot of that that has to be refined over a period of time, but, you know, we have a pretty good understanding, but it could be improved. So we can bring that back at another meeting to kind of get into the details of that.
Monthly water billing? That'll help identify.
It'll help for sure, and it may also, yes, it'll definitely make it, I think, easier for us to see what's going on and to account for things a little more quickly. I mean, reading the meetings every two months, you get the same information, you just don't get it as timely. But I think the other thing that the new meters bring is, you know, just more certainty or more accuracy, not that our meters are inaccurate because our water supply has been pretty clean in terms of water quality, it's been very good, so the meters don't wear out that fast, and so I don't think Mark's been seeing very high, you know, inaccuracies even in the meetings of the meters he's pulled out. So I don't know if we'll see a significant change, but, you know, we'll just have more confidence in the accuracy of that information.
Earlier, someone mentioned the water loss at the treatment plants for, I'm guessing samplings up, but I'm thinking that's kind of like the village hall. It's a negligible amount of water that we're losing due to the process of making water?
So with the water treatment plants, the ion exchange system is like your home water softener, so you have to regenerate it, just like if you have a home water softener, so that's necessary. That adds up to probably about 3% of your throughput, so that does register. The lime softening plant, it's probably on three to five percent that's needed to be able to blow down the lime, to backwash filters, they'll use it here. Here at the Village Hall, again, I would be surprised if it even registered as a tenth for it, but if you combine a lot of different facilities throughout the community that maybe you don't end up billing, I don't know if there are, but if you do, then maybe you start to see something register there.
You know, it's a cumulative impact. You know, now you know, and you would just start to make sure all that's counted, you know, whether, you wouldn't charge yourself, obviously, but you would account for it. Similarly, there may be other activities that we want to meter and monitor and then waive the billing, but, you know, like fire drills or firefighting exercises, things like that that could add up to some, you know, more significant water use.
Water used in processes on the monthly water production report on how much each plant uses.
That's before the meter, though?
Yes.
That actually doesn't count towards the 10%?
It does not.
Got it.
The, and the water main breaks, I mean, we have areas in the village where we get water main breaks, and we don't know we have a break until we see an increase in water usage. You know, at the plants, we're pumping more water than what we normally would, so then you go out and you listen, but technology can help us out there because now they have devices that you can put out into the system, listening devices that listen 24/7, and they report leaks. And years ago, they didn't have that technology, now they do, and it's works off of cell and different things. So the ability now exists that if we wanted, through the leak detection program, we could install these throughout the system to catch water main breaks a lot quicker.
Mark used a great term the other day when we were talking, the new water meters are smarter smart meters. You know, so the technology is going to help with, Dan and I talked about this the other day, if your house normally doesn't use water from 10:00 AM until 5:00 AM, and suddenly it's using water every night, it warrants a phone call or an inspection to identify the problem, and it doesn't have to be manned, it can just put an alarm up, raise the antenna.
Right, and the new meters don't have any moving parts, so you don't have, you know, mechanical failure, because, I mean, that's another issue, so if you take the read and the meter breaks, the day after you take the read, then you're not, you know, you're not accounting for that water, then you have to just do an estimate for the house, so.
All right, any other questions on that? So how's about we take fifteen minutes, there's pizza upstairs. Before you leave tonight, don't forget to get your certificate for three master's credits. Great water production, so fifteen minutes.
I'm getting my IP license now, right?
Do I get CEUs for this? Can you get an IP number?
You can see over there, there's pizza upstairs.
Put that out so you guys have it, so.
All right, here we go, rounding the corner here and heading towards the finish line. We are on slide fifty-five of seventy-four. Going to pull it all together now with the costs. We talked to them about them independently, we're going to add them all together and then go through some apples-to-apples comparison so that you can at least evaluate the cost, and then beyond that, we're going to go into the key considerations and summarize those for each of the alternatives. This is the cost, the total capital cost, including the buy-in cost, if they apply, for the alternatives. You'll see the stars at the bottom as well as the stars next to them. We did add in the non-revenue water cost at the full amount, the thirty-four million dollars, for the Aurora alternative, the DuPage Water Commission alternative, the Joliet Water Commission, and then if there was numbers for the Illinois American Water System or Illinois Lake Water System, we were there as well. Because it's not a regulatory requirement for the Fox River Montgomery alone and the Water Link subregional system, we did not add the full thirty-four million dollars to those. We did one-third of the value with the assumption that the village would have a little bit more control over those timelines and spread that cost over a longer timeframe. If that's something that, you know, you wanted to reevaluate, wanted us to reevaluate, we certainly could, but that's how we applied it, again, one-third for the upper two and then the full cost for the remaining because you're purchasing water at a higher rate.
Okay, so is it a requirement for Aurora? It's not a requirement?
Not a requirement for Aurora.
But it makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay, so you'll have these capital costs that cycle in at different times, and then based on the different alternatives, the loans or whatever other financing vehicle you use will come in at a different time. The first column after the description of each one of the alternatives is the estimated construction year, so recall that for the first three, for instance, we were in that, you know, 2030 range, so you'd be starting to take out some of these loans in 2027, same with the Lake Michigan Joliet Water Commission, Joliet Area Water Commission. If you went, you know, the quick route, let's just say with the DuPage Water Commission, then it might be as soon as 2024 that you would take out some of these loans. The cheapest money of the four that are identified up here would, I suppose, be the DuPage Water Commission buy-in because they're suggesting that they would give you a zero-interest loan on that money, but for those, for the money that you would actually have to go through a loan program, the IEPA State Revolving Fund is likely going to be the cheapest. We ended up having that the same interest rate for the EPA WIFIA, but right now, the SRF is actually a little bit cheaper than the WIFIA, we're just trying to project out a little bit in time. Both of those, we're looking at 2% interest rate. Again, SRF is the lowest right now at 1.11, however, there's a limit to how much money that you can get out of the SRF because you're competing with the rest of the state. The term on that loan would be about 20 years. For WIFIA, those loans are 35 years, so an extended timeframe, but you can only fund 49% of your alternative through the WIFIA. For now, again, we maximize the SRF dollars for what we think might be a possibility. Any leftover goes to the WIFIA, and then if it got to the point where forty, over 49% was remaining between WIFIA and something else, we would have gone with bonds. Because we didn't have that situation, we don't have any in the bond column. This, you know, is an estimate, these interest rates are obviously going to change, but we establish them, have it apples-to-apples, and then see how it shakes out. The last column is what the inflated cost would be at construction. So the previous one had today's dollars, the ones on the right would be, for instance, the Montgomery alone in 2027, it's projected that that capital cost would be on the order of eighty-six million because of inflation over time. First way to compare each one of the alternatives is what's called a net present value. You could have alternatives that have a lower capital cost, but they have a higher operation and maintenance cost or higher buy-in cost over time or whatever it may be. This type of approach is an attempt at trying to wrap them all together. We essentially took all the dollar amounts, pushed them out to 2030 to have a capital amount in the same timeframe, and then from 2030 to 2050, we took the 20 years of operation and maintenance cost, pulled that all back to 2030, and stacked them on top of each other, so that, again, you could evaluate the capital plus the O M and R to see which is the cheapest versus which is the most expensive. You have kind of the stair-step approach here under this comparison, meaning the Fox River Montgomery alone is cheaper, up to the Joliet Water System, which is the most expensive, although they're all within a reasonable, in my mind, separation of each other. Another way to look at this, because it's a little hard to probably comprehend, you know, 200 million dollars and what that means, is breaking the cost down into what might be a typical average monthly residential water bill. The first block there is your existing water system. So if you take your existing water system and you have this, you know, average water customer that used 5,500 gallons of water in a month, their bill in 2030 is projected to be about $48.80, and that's taking your existing rate, we talked about that earlier, 680 per thousand gallons, inflating that out to 2030, and then using the 5,500 gallons. Please note that that projection out to 2030 for your existing system is based on a 3% increase because, again, we wanted the apples-to-apples comparison to the other alternatives. There's a note at the bottom, you've implemented a policy that suggests that, or that states that you're going to go at 5.5% per year out to 2030 with the thought that you know that you're heading towards an alternative water source program and can build up some savings to be able to pay for that. If you do go out, or when you do go out at the 5.5%, it would be more like $60 for that typical residential bill. Next then, if we look at each one of the alternatives, we broke it up into different components so that you could see, remember our slide where we talked about the costs and the different components that go into that? So the most, the bottommost orange stack or rectangle, I guess, is the existing debt service on your system, some of which you would actually probably pay off before 2030. For now, we just kept it consistent across the board. The next item up is that darker blue, which is the existing supply and treatment, O M and R, that goes away with the new alternative, so you don't see that dark blue anymore. Next up is that brown, so there's that existing distribution system, O M and R, that's consistent across all the alternatives because you have to operate the system. If there is specific buy-in capital costs, then we've got that in a purple color, and I apologize if anybody's colorblind, but, should I point these out?
No, no, what I was saying, could you, I bet you're pointing to it on your monitor? Can you point to it on that? Yeah, there you go. I know it's a little harder for you, but, there you go.
So we're on to the purple here, which would be the buy-in, tap-on cost, so the Fox River system, you know, that's that 33 million dollars that we suggest, or that they have suggested, and then this DuPage Water Commission, that's the 10 million dollars that's broken down into annual payments and then broken further down into the rate. Beyond that then is your purchase water, so purchase water is your light blue across all these instances, and, you know, purchasing the water from the Water Link system, for instance, or from the City of Aurora, and then the Lake Michigan alternative. See the difference in the blue here? So the smaller lighter blue is if the estimated cost of service rate structure is implemented, whereas the larger blue is if you have the scenario where it seems, keeps consistent with that current rate. And then, of course, with the Joliet system, you have that as well. The capital costs are, that is the debt service for buying into each one of those systems to be able to get the facilities to your receiving stations, and then that last one, in many instances, a pretty small red blip, is the additional O and M and R for these existing systems. So if you come into a receiving station, you'll have to pump that water out of the ground storage tank, up into the elevated tanks or a cost-effective distribution system that was accounting for those new receiving stations and the energy to go with it. So what does this say? I mean, it says, you know, in my mind, remember that these are planning numbers, we have 30% contingency built in overall, they're pretty close, not a huge separation here in costs. Yes, there is some difference, and, you know, it's up to you as to how you might want to weight that difference. The other thing to point out is from the Lake Michigan alternatives, the cheapest one is if the DuPage Water Commission is able to develop that cost-of-service rate structure into the contract, but the Joliet Commission fits right in between the two Lake Michigan alternatives, so that would end up being a pretty significant key there, and then, of course, you need to balance some of the other things to go with that too, to determine which one would make sense if you want to head towards a Lake Michigan alternative. So a lot there, anything you want to talk about specifically on this slide right now before we go on?
Does it include employee costs?
Includes employee costs, yes it does, for all of the alternatives. So for the lime softening plant, we added several employees to be able to operate that system because it's 24/7 operation, and then for the other alternatives, essentially it's built into the distribution cost associated with that, and then some in the O M and R.
But does it also include other employee costs other than just operators? For instance, I know there's a certain number of maintenance workers that are paid out of the water fund, a certain percentage of the director's salary. I don't know, are water billing clerks paid out of the water fund also? That's, I guess that's a question I'm answering. I'm asking, is it all, all the costs are associated? Right now, are they taken into consideration within these numbers?
Yes, I believe so, because they're built into this brown one here primarily for the O M and R as part of your existing system.
Okay, then as we change systems, if we have to eliminate operator positions because we take somebody else's water, we're just going to pump and dump, so we don't need four operators, that's also?
I did not do any reductions per se, and I don't know from a staffing perspective how you want to handle that.
So is the question that, how would it, how would it look if we were to go to a Lake Michigan option versus our current staffing? So essentially, as Jeff pointed out, the requirements for operators would be less, like we touched on earlier in the presentation about the need for, the certifications would be substantially less for us to operate a Lake Michigan allocation, so therefore, we wouldn't need as many operators, but we would also be, we're currently understaffed in the water department as far as the distribution system maintenance goes, so more than likely, while those positions will characteristically look a little bit different, manpower-wise, they'd be the same, if that makes sense.
Sure. So none of these alternatives envision staffing cuts, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
But they do account for the cost of the employees, and I mean throughout, so, so I just want to make sure that this includes all the costs of the employees, like I said, because I know there's, depends on the position, certain employees are paid out of the water fund, certain employees are paid out of the general fund, that's all taken into consideration in this, so it's, there's no?
Yes, that's my understanding, through this, through the course of the information that EEI was given, that accounted for all the expenditures from the water fund as far as staffing goes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we talked about this a little bit throughout different periods of time throughout the presentation, but just wanted to show you what the dollar and cents mean if you ended up delaying this. So do you connect with the system in 2025 versus do you wait a year? Do you wait five years and are able to push it out to 2030? The projected 2030 cost to run the existing system is on the order of 6.9 million dollars, so operating those wells, treatment plants that are there in 2030, if you generate sufficient revenue of 6.9 million, you know, you should have enough to be able to operate that system. Well, the cheapest, least-cost alternative for switching over is over 13 million dollars, therefore, in one year, any given year, say, in any given year, you're saving, I guess, the water system slash the residents as much as 6 million dollars by delaying that. Therefore, while some of these alternatives may be able to be implemented a little bit sooner, you may want to consider seeing if it's possible to delay that out a couple more years. You'll have more time to take care of your non-revenue water, and you'll save some extra money here to then be able to put into, you know, the capital investment.
So is it that ratepayers, water users, would save 6.3 million dollars for every year?
Correct, yes, yes. It wouldn't be like the village saving it per se, although, you know, the village saves it, but then they don't charge it, you know, it's, it all passes through essentially. Schedule, we've talked about these individually, but just putting them together, the Montgomery only alternative, we had suggested that it could be online as, you know, start of 2029, the Water Link alternative could be, you know, into the 2030. The Waterlink alternative could be, you know, into the 2030s. The Aurora connection, based on, you know, not a lot needed to make that connection, assuming it can work through contracting, could again be sooner. As well as DuPage Water Commission and Illinois American could be sooner. The Joliet Water Commission, we talked about this specifically, is targeting 2030 for the implementation. Key considerations, we introduced these before, and now we're gonna go through each one of the alternatives with all six of the key consideration on the alternative, so that we can see the differences. And of course, these are just summaries, there's probably more that goes into it. And, you know, for each individual, it might be more on a particular topic, and one might mean more than another. So for the Fox River, Montgomery alone, starting with cost, it is the lowest cost alternative due to the fact that you have an existing lime softening plant. You know, your neighbors that you're, that are also evaluating this, Yorkville, and Oswego, they don't have a lime softening plant, so they have to start from scratch. You guys take that existing plant and can convert it over and expand it to be able to handle the river water, you're kind of money ahead for this alternative. But then there's other things to consider, the water quality, you know, there could be some potential seasonal raw water quality considerations for the Fox River. But like I said before, we wanted to get this on apples-to-apples, so the type of treatment, the advanced treatment process that we've identified and costed out would be able to get an affluent water quality that you would be happy with and that we believe would be consistent with Lake Michigan water. The risk in this instance, 100% on you to be able to, you know, design, permit, implement it, and operate it for the next 50-plus years. Control governance, you don't have to worry about it, because it's you. Sustainability and quantity, you know, the Fox River is a sustainable supply, but like we talked about, there's gonna be times when it's gonna go below those, that low-flow seasonal, or low-flow restricted level, and you'll have to turn the wells on for backup. And management and staffing, I mean, you would operate a treatment plant. It's similar, I mean, it's the same treatment process as your current lime softening, but switching from groundwater water, groundwater to surface water. And then staffing that, you know, requires a lot of attention and certainly a lot of well-educated, well-experienced staff to be able to maintain that system.
So the entire town would be furnished water through the lime softening plant, then?
Pardon me?
The entire village would be serviced through the lime softening plant?
Yes, the ion exchange systems would be taken offline, because the focus would be to try to maximize the Fox River water.
Okay, then would you recommend going from breakpoint chlorination, then? Or will we stay on breakpoint?
For your system, I think it's still small enough that you probably would consider, continue to consider free chlorine. It's actually a really good point. So Aurora uses chloramination, so if you did go with Aurora, you would convert. I don't think you would really notice a difference within your system. This is a different way of chlorinating, and you don't want me to break out a chlorine breakpoint curve and get this going. It's, trust me with that, if we want to get into it, we can at another time. But Chicago is surprising. So chloramines, a lot of times are used in larger systems, because the residual will last longer. Somewhat surprising, but I think for good reason. Chicago distributes free chlorine. They don't, and it's a very large system, right, with their system, and then with all their wholesale customers. And part of it is, I think, because of the number of people, communities, wholesale suppliers that they sell water to, it's easier to dial in the free chlorine. So I think for, again, a system of your size, because it's not too big, you would probably stay with free chlorine. The only way that you would change would be if, you know, you went with Aurora.
That plant needs to be staffed 24/7, correct?
Yes, the Fox River water, whenever...
Not monitored, staffed.
Staffed, and you would have to have, I would say, at least two people there, you know, to operate it, monitor things coming through. You'd have to take some tests, I think, throughout every one of the shifts, and then you would set up another, you know, one of the main shifts for analytic, for the main analyticals. But yeah, you're talking surface water, and that could certainly change over time, and maybe even very quickly, and therefore you need people to monitor it.
And that's included in your cost calculation?
Yes. All right, so then, yeah, we got through all those, right? Oh, I'm sorry, we were doing the, oh, okay, so if we get into the, thank you. The Waterlink subregional system, a lot, very similar. The cost ended up, as you recall, you know, pretty similar. A little bit higher in this instance, again, you're in a situation where you've got that existing plant for one of your neighbors, for instance, when they were starting from scratch, it was more costly for them to start from scratch than go as a group. Water quality is, as we had discussed, overall, the intake, you know, is different. We've talked about that one earlier. Risk in this instance, you know, you're working with two other communities, you're spreading that risk across those communities as well. Control governance, instead of you making all the decisions, you certainly, we need to work with Yorkville and Oswego in this instance, either through an IGA or a commissioner, Jawa. Sustainability, we talked about for the backup. And then the management and staffing would be on, most likely, the Jawa. So if you just did an IGA, then it would be on your three communities specifically. If you created a Jawa, you would create that separate governmental unit that would have potentially even its own executive director, it'd have its own staff. And then you would typically sit on the board, for instance, or you would have a representative on the board to be able to make decisions. That's how the other Jawas in Illinois are set up. The Aurora alternative costs are, you know, the lowest upfront, but because of those buy-in costs being a little bit higher, it ends up being consistent with a lot of the other costs. Water quality from the Fox River, you know, we've already talked about in their treatment system, would be able to provide a high-quality effluent. The risk in this instance is, you know, you sign a contract, long-term contract with the City of Aurora, and then, you know, work through the contract there. Same with the control and governance, sustainability, we've already talked about, and the management and staffing, they obviously already staff their water treatment plant 24/7, so you would just be relying on them for that.
Is there any other municipalities purchasing from Aurora currently?
I don't believe so. I think currently Aurora, it just provides their own residents. I will say that when they reached out to Montgomery, they reached out to a couple other communities that are adjacent to them as well to offer up, or to open up discussions for providing water to them. They have stated that it's unlikely they would have capacity to provide to all of those communities, and when asked, the comment was, it would probably end up being first, come first served. So whichever community signs up first, if they're ready to go, then they would ultimately reserve that capacity and move forward on a contract.
And is that why it wasn't analyzed, the three communities going to Aurora, or the other two weren't interested?
I think it was never asked, I suppose. Second part is, is I don't think there's sufficient capacity for all three, based on their existing system. Third is, you know, those costs, probably based on what we see here, would be comparable, if not maybe more expensive, just trying to reason through in my head. I mean, the capital improvements would be shorter distances, of course, than some of these Lake Michigan alternatives, but when, if you were to factor in equally the buy-in cost for you, similar to what it would be for Yorkville and Oswego, and put all that together, it would probably be comparable, if not higher. But it comes down to it, they probably don't have the capacity to serve them.
Does Aurora have the capacity, when Aurora is fully built out, and Montgomery's full out, fully built out, does Aurora have the capacity to serve those two communities?
Based on what they told us, with the capacity in their plant, I believe that they do. Now, that goes back to one of your early discussions about, well, what if in Montgomery, you got a really high water user, then you could run into challenges there. Their plant has the ability, from what I understand, for a little bit of expansion there, if need be. But, you know, their site, if you've ever been by or at that treatment plant, is a little bit limited too. So, you know, for Montgomery, I mean, they're a town of 200,000 people, and Montgomery build outs 42, so just in pure numbers, you're, you know, less than 25%. So if you grew a decent amount, I think there's probably, it's probably reasonable to believe that they could expand their system to serve you. And they're pretty close to building out, from what I understand, in the City of Aurora, so I don't think they're expecting their demand within their community to go up too much.
Would, I guess, this would have been better asked earlier in the presentation, but Aurora's offer to provide water service for other municipalities, is that just an avenue for them to generate revenue? Or just to maximize the use? And if it is to generate revenue, are there costs negotiable?
I think probably all the above. I mean, they have an asset or assets within their system that size for a capacity that their existing residents aren't gonna use. So, you know, why not, if, thinking from Aurora's perspective, why not see if we can find a way to use that capacity, and if we can get revenue for it, and, you know, make it worth the while, then why not? I mean, the one component that's kind of baked in here is, is that they're looking at about an 8.5% return on the volumetric cost. So it's not just, you know, one gallon of water out of the plant, they're, you're paying equal for equal. There is a little bit of a return on that, and then again, you're buying capacity for that system. Also, I mean, I would like to think they're, you know, they have access to the Fox River, which is a sustainable source, and they have the capacity, and they have the permit to withdraw from being able to share within the region. It's probably something that they're considering as well.
Would they, would they consider a cost-of-water agreement like Joliet has with Chicago?
So, yes, I believe so, because that's actually how they did it. Uh-oh. Can I come back? All right. That is actually how they computed it. So when they went through, and actually the village helped support this study by a consultant that they had hired, they did it based on the cost-of-service analysis. They came up with a water rate that was actually pretty comparable to some of these other ones, like the Joliet alternative. But then on top of that, you know, is the extra number of paying for the capacity in the system that kind of adds up.
And do you know how much river water they currently use, or how dependent on their aquifers they are?
For the average across the year, my recollection is that they average about 60% Fox River water, 40% groundwater. They do have shallow wells, so the 40% is not all deep wells, a portion of that shallow wells. In the summer, they can get into situations where they get down, you know, under 50% and maybe even well below 50% if they're trying to get through some water quality challenges, for instance, in the Fox River. But the long term, you know, again, across the year, 60%. They've been trying to work on increasing that throughout the years, and I think are continuing to try to increase that by taking more Fox River water. Because there's water quality considerations, but there's also temperature considerations. You know, the Fox River can get pretty cold in the winter, so they're trying to, in some cases, they put in some well water to moderate that temperature a little bit better throughout the system.
So these are not, so if they were to switch off of the Fox River in the summer, it's not during that, you know, drought period. It is, it could be a rainy summer, and they was, they could switch off of it right now currently because of water quality considerations, like a, whatever it might be.
Could be, but often, they see the biggest water quality challenges during low flows because of the algae outbreaks typically is what causes that. The low-flow levels in the Fox, which I'm sure you all know this, because it was last month, are always September, which isn't always aligned with the hottest time of the year. I mean, July and August, a lot of times are the hottest, but just based on how the watershed distributes the water down into the Fox River, it's usually delayed out into the September time period.
So we should expect, if we went Fox River alone, to have a similar situation?
Definitely.
Yeah, in fact, when they switch to more well water in the summer, that actually affects the pumping capacity of our well 14 and 15. Because they turn on their well on Jericho Road. And so then we'll see a reduction in our flow at our well 14 and 15.
Getting to the Lake Michigan alternatives, then, DuPage Water Commission first. We've already talked about this, but the costs, you know, the big variable there is where their rate will land, whether it costs service or consistent with the current model. Water quality, City of Chicago is treating that water consistently of high quality. And then the risk would be that the commission ends up constructing the transmission main out, and then you would have the internal improvements. And all the risk on these slides, anyway, is just generally focused on construction. The control and governance, you know, you would become a member of DWC, and then potentially that new district that we talked about being formed, and then have a board representative that would likely be one of the three communities if you all three join. Sustainability, the Lake Michigan, of course, is sustainable. However, you want to keep those existing wells online for backup. And then management staffing, it's all on Chicago and DWC to operate the supply, treatment, transmission systems. For the Joliet Water Commission, similar costs, similar water quality to Page Water Commission, risk is the same situation. The commission is going to construct all those facilities to get to a receiving station site. Governance is the one that probably differentiates this the most from other Lake Michigan system, where you would be a voting member on the board. And then sustainability is the same in management. In this instance, the commission would take care of all that with the staffing and management of your supply, treatment, and transmissions, or the transmission system. For the Illinois Lake Water System, again, very similar for cost, or, well, I shouldn't say that. We don't have costs, so we'll see if, you know, you want to carry that forward as an alternative, then we can attempt to dig in deeper. If that's the case, then more than likely you'd have to sign a nondisclosure agreement or approve one and execute it. If it's not something that seems to be making the cut based on things you've already heard, then you can take that alternative off of the list. Risk, you know, the risk would be on them to construct the facility. Control governance here is a little bit different in the sense that you have that purchase agreement through the private utility, and then sustainable quantity management staffing is consistent with previous Lake Michigan alternatives. So now, you have six alternatives, you have six key decisions, key considerations. How do you define which alternative rises to the top? Well, as engineers, when we hear about multiple variables, we immediately go to a matrix. And what we can do, if you want, if this makes sense, is develop this weighted decision matrix out further. It's a way for you to use a quantitative tool to help you kind of reason through some of these. An explanation is, you have the key considerations here, and we would set up a rating for it. So a rating being, you know, one being the highest cost, five being the lowest cost. And then for each one of the alternatives down here, we would work with staff to fill out those ratings for you, as the ones that, you know, did this analysis, developed it. So we'd put in the different numbers here. And we would carry that forward for water quality, risk, control, et cetera. So all the blue columns will be filled in. What you would then do is go to the yellow boxes, and you would put a weight on each one of the alternatives. So for instance, if you thought cost was the most important alternative, you might put 50% of the weight on that, and then carry forward with, you know, 10, 10, 10, 10, 10 for the rest. This matrix would then take into account the weight that you provide and the value that the staff put in to come up with a weighted value. And then you would add all the weighted values together, and you come up with a total number for each alternative. Once that's done, then whichever one theoretically has the highest value is the one that seemed to make the most amount of sense. What we believe people do with this, then, is, is go through, do it once, and then say, well, what if I change the risk to a higher level, drop cost, whatever? It just gives you that opportunity to kind of play with the numbers, to see how different things affect. It might be a tool that helps you make that decision. If you like this alternate, if you would like this, what we would probably end up doing is bringing this back at the workshop, or as part of the workshop discussion that's scheduled for November. If you feel like this is no use, won't hurt my feelings, and you can make the decision just considering things on your own, then it's one less thing that I guess we have to do.
I would like to see us use this. I think this could be a good tool as part of our seminar that we have, even for nothing more, just for discussion purposes amongst the board. more, just for discussion purposes amongst the board, just so you can think about each one of these maybe in detail and how that ranks, so I would like to see us use it.
And can we get that prior to that workshop?
Yes, sure.
Please?
Yeah, yes.
Like, yeah, like a week or two ahead of time, so that way we can play with numbers and think about it, because we have nothing else to do.
Anytime before Friday, it'll be fine.
And I'm going to need Pete to pre-fill in mine, so I know what I'm going to say.
Yeah, well, and I guess I should clarify here. I mean, for those that might have this concern, I wouldn't envision you necessarily coming to the meeting and saying, here's my matrix, right? It's just a tool for you to use independently. Maybe we fill it out as a group, if you like that, just to see, and again, it brings up the ability for, or path for people to say, well, I really kind of think control governance is a little more important than cost or vice versa overall. Next steps, then, the plan is to have an open house for Village of Montgomery residents on November 3rd. Presumably, we'd have it here for those that attended the Waterlink public meeting. We were thinking something very similar, set it up in the stations so that people can have the opportunity to talk at each one of the stations, and we'll have people help walk through the process. The board workshop that we've just been referencing is scheduled for Saturday, November 13th, where you'll have discussion there. And presumably, you'll be talking about this, you know, at other board meetings, too, in November, and heading towards the decision by the end of December. The one deadline there is, is Joliet Water, area Water Commission does want a decision, essentially, you know, by the end of the year, end of January. They just need the communities to make a decision so that they can size the system appropriately and then move on. So beyond that, you know, these other alternatives don't necessarily have a deadline, from what I understand, but you'll need to decide if the Joliet system makes sense for you by, you know, let's just say, end of December into January.
If we picked any of the Lake Michigan water options, it's essentially Yorkville, Montgomery, and Oswego all going. Because say, say we chose Joliet, right? And Oswego and Yorkville decide they wanted, they, they would have to decide the same thing, wouldn't they? Or to make it cost-effective?
So the most cost-effective for the region would be a fall three. There is a potential that two of you could connect. I think, you know, that would have to be a consideration with all the other communities in that area. Like I said, they baked in a number for now, 12.9 million dollars per MGD. I would have to guess that if that inflates, you know, too much, I don't even know what that tolerance would be, if only, if only like Montgomery, or if only Montgomery, Yorkville went that route, then it may not be an option. But I wouldn't necessarily shut that door yet, that if, you know, one community went one route and the other two wanted to go in that direction, it still might be a possibility. Any other questions or comments?
Well, you put some thought into this, Jeff. Appreciate it.
A lot of people that did a lot of hard work.
Yeah, absolutely. And I should thank, you know, our staff, your staff at EEI, you know, the folks that have been working directly with us, Oswego, you know, we're part of that study, the Joliet folks and their leadership on this, DuPage Water Commission, I mean, it's, this is like a massive presentation, the biggest one I think we've ever seen, probably the most important decision we'll ever make, sitting in these chairs. So I mentioned everybody before, we're not looking for any sort of decision or even a straw poll this evening as to which way you're thinking. I think it's probably prudent to digest, think, ask questions. This will be on for future meetings, as you saw there. So we don't have a ton of time, but we have plenty of time to accomplish this, so a decision that is. Any questions for Jeff or staff? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on quickly. Any newer unfinished?
Halloween Safety Event was Sunday. I didn't see you.
I heard you guys were there, but I didn't.
Yeah, I was there. Thank you for everybody that came out, and again, hats off to the PD for a fantastic job, Commander Palco and Ada. And Gina doesn't even see it yet, but she's being flassoed in. But they really did, everyone stepped up, even with the little rain delay that happened. You know, people came out and they just love it. It's just such a great event. So thank you to the PD for all the help, chief with his support. So that was, it was a lot of fun.
Perfect. Anything else?
The Tuesday after our last board meeting, those stop signs went up on Concord, and I think it's been a great addition to that intersection, so kudos. I haven't seen too many complaints on it.
Oh, there'll be people that complain.
Well, they have, but minimal, unlike the Mayfield Drive closure. It's, I think people realize that that was really a true necessity at that intersection, so thanks to your, your crew that got that up and running.
All right, if there's nothing else, future meeting schedule, you can see there, we do not have executive session, and a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yep.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.